The Leominster City Council meeting is funded in part by the Careless Insurance Agency at www.decarelessinsuranceagency.com and by Avidia Bank at www.avidiabank.com.
No one else had it, she did. This is weird, huh?
Yeah.
This is like fourth time. Four times.
Okay, it's 6:30 and our first scheduled item on the agenda is a public hearing of the Public Safety Service Committee, excuse me, chaired by Brandon Robbins. Are you ready, Counselor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is a public hearing on petition 2-25. Massachusetts Electric Company Doing Business As National Grid requests permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Lancaster Street, National Grid to install one solely owned pole on Lancaster Street beginning at a point approximately 190 feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of Central Street and Lancaster Street. National Grid will be installing new pole 2-84 and guy to replace tree guy since the tree is being removed, Leominster, Mass. Location approximately as shown on plan attached. I'm joined by the other two members of the Public Service Committee, Counselor Claire Frida on my left and Counselor Shalfo Zephyr on my right. Is there a representative from National Grid here who would like to speak to this? Perfect.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lee Shu. I'm representing National Grid tonight. Thank you so much for your time. So to start, am I able to start?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay, great, thank you. So we'll start on the Lancaster Street one. So this pole is 2- new pole 2-84 and the reason behind this job is because there's a dead tree currently where pole 2-84 is on Lancaster Street near the intersection. From what I've been told, it's dying and it's not in the best place. So unfortunately, you know, over 50 years ago, we put tree guys up so it would be, you know, a metal wire supporting the pole from the opposing forces and we would put them in trees, which is obviously a bad idea because they rot and they die and it's going to kill the tree as well. So unfortunately, that's the only support structure supporting pole 2 going in the opposite direction. So in order to get rid of the tree, we would have to install a support pole in order to balance out the forces.
Okay. On the plan that's attached, there's an existing pole. That pole is staying there, correct? The one that's across the street and the guy is just going on to a new pole?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Do any members of the committee have any questions they would like to ask Counselor Frida? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
You're open. Well, I will come back to it, but I'll come back to it.
Okay, I was just going to ask, who told you that the tree needs to be removed? That it's rotting or dying?
I spoke to someone from the town a while, a few months back. I'm at the Monsey. Unfortunately, I don't remember their name, but this was called in by the town, so the DPW.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Any other members of the council have any questions on this petition? All right, seeing none, I'll go to members of the public. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of or against petition 2-24?
Yes, sir, I would.
All right. Just identify yourself by your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Theodore Fiffey. Please refer to me as Ted. I grew up at 17 Lancaster Street and I am the current owner of the property. The tree in question, and I want to say this respectfully, is thriving and healthy, okay? And it's providing shade and shadow for the neighborhood and the canopy also adds aesthetic beauty to the area. And I have for the council, I have some photos to show the council, if I may approach and just.
Go right ahead.
There are two sheets of photos that show the tree.
Don't pass that far.
And, yeah, please, thank you. And given the realities of global warming and climate change and the intense heat that we're getting, the shade that the tree provides is really an amenity to the neighborhood. And I really believe that aesthetically, if the tree is replaced with a utility pole, it's going to be a detriment to the quality of life in the area. And with regards to its health, I'm not sure how it was determined that the tree is not healthy, but it is thriving and it's been there for generations and I feel that it will be there for generations more. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for even hearing me.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Fiffey. Appreciate it. For a second time, is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of or against this petition? All right, for a third and final time, is there anybody like to speak in favor of or against this petition? Seeing none, Counselor Frida?
No, are you done with the public?
Yeah, I'm done with the public. Go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, how did you determine that that tree should come down?
So I'm pretty sure I spoke to DPW of Leominster and he said that the tree was coming down and that in order for the tree to come down, our guy wire needs to be removed first.
So they said the tree was coming down whether you put a pole up or not?
So the whole, the reason for the pole is because the tree is coming down, is what I've been told.
So if the tree stayed, you wouldn't be removing, you wouldn't be putting the pole there, correct?
That's correct, now unless someone calls it in.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
No.
Any other member, Council President Vidal?
Thank you. So could the tree and the new pole that's going to support the guy wire coexist?
Yes, they could coexist.
But is the current plan anticipating that or would you have to redesign the plan in order for them to coexist?
I could, no, the plan could actually stay actually now that I'm thinking about it if they were to coexist, but the whole reason for the pole was because I was informed the tree was coming down.
Right.
So if it was going to stay, then we'll be, we'll be outside.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yeah, so if the tree stayed, you wouldn't have need for a pole? Is that right?
That's correct.
So there'd be no new pole?
Correct.
Got it. Thanks.
All right. Any other members of the council have any questions? Counselor Cormier?
So have we had any contact with the DPW? Do we know if there's already their intention of taking this down?
We have the letter from the DPW just from the referral. I'm going to ask that before we close this public hearing, that we reach out to them regarding the tree and really see, get some further explanation on why the tree should be taken down.
Just a suggestion, maybe you should read the letter into the record for now.
I can, yeah, I can do that. The letter, so we asked for a referral from the DPW. We received a letter back on July 10th, 2024. Petition 2-25 Massachusetts Electric Company Doing Business As National Grid requests permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Lancaster Street, National Grid to install one solely owned pole on Lancaster Street beginning at a point approximately 190 feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of Central Street and Lancaster Street. National Grid will be installing new pole 2-84 and guy to replace tree guy since the tree is being removed, Leominster, Mass. Dear Maribel, the Leominster Department of Public Works has reviewed the petition to install a pole on Lancaster Street and offers the following comments. The DPW approves the petition as submitted. Please let us know if you have any questions sincerely, Ray Racine, DPW Director. So seeing such, I think it would be appropriate to keep this open and see if we can get a better explanation of why that tree needs to come down and see if we can help out a constituent as well. Any other questions? All right, seeing such, I, we're going to keep the public hearing open. Do we have a date?
I just asked the acting clerk for one, so when it gets to the, that point in the agenda, we'll.
We can vote on it then.
We'll vote on it.
Great. Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
I'll stick to go on the other one, Mr. President.
Yes, you may proceed.
This is a public hearing before the Public Service Committee on petition 3-25 Massachusetts Electric Company Doing Business As National Grid requests permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Pleasant Street, National Grid to install one solely owned pole on Pleasant Street beginning at a point approximately 66 feet south of the center line of the intersection of Pleasant Street and Pleasant Place. National Grid will be installing quadruplex to service 800A at 71 Pleasant Street, installing stub pole 8-84 to support the new quadruplex wire, Leominster, Massachusetts. Location approximately as shown on plan attached. If you'd like to speak to this one as well?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
So, thank you, everyone, again. So this one is for new pole 8-84 and again, this is just another stub pole. Essentially, there's already some wire running through property 71 and 65 on Pleasant Street and the owner of 71 wants to upgrade, so essentially they want to add some more equipment, more wires and that would cause imbalance of the forces. So it's a very similar situation, except this time we're adding new, a lot of new equipment onto our poles. So this is just to support that, all the forces caused by the new structures.
This is another one that we got a letter back from the DPW on. I'm going to read that into the record because I have a question that's based on it. Again, they have, this is dated July 10th, 2024. They have the petition lined out. Dear Maribel, the Leominster Department of Public Works has reviewed the petition to install a pole on Pleasant Street and offers the following comments. The DPW approves the petition with the following conditions. The back of the sidewalk is on the edge of the right of way of Pleasant Street. The guy wire should be placed on city property. The guy wire should be placed with enough clearance to allow a sidewalk tractor to pass. Please let us know if you have any questions sincerely, Ray Racine, DPW Director. I just want to make sure that National Grid is aware of those conditions and that they can meet them.
Okay, so this is something I would probably have to revisit. As it stands, from what I saw, there's a little bit of area that the city owns because I've spoken to the DPW as well and I've gotten a right of way plan. And from what I could see, due to the size of the pole and the width of the right of way, if the pole were to go there, the anchor with the guy wire that the DPW Director referred to, that would almost have to go on private property. And I did reach out to the owner or I had our representatives reach out, so they should be aware of an easement. That needs to be signed for that anchor, but I understand the DPW's request.
All right. Counselor Frida, do you have any questions? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
So I have a couple of questions. So I'm looking at the plan and it says new pole 8-84.
Yes.
Is there an existing pole that the stub pole's going next to?
Yes, it would be on the adjacent property on the corner of 71.
On the corner of 71 and Morse Place?
So it would be the opposite corner of the property of 71. There's a small strip between 71 and 65.
Okay, so there's, there's a pole there.
Yes.
And you want to put a stub pole across the street?
Yes.
Okay, and how tall is the stub pole?
I think I put it for 35. No, it's a 40 foot three, so 40 feet when they put in the ground will be about, it'd be 34 feet above ground.
Okay. Why is it called a stub pole?
It's called a stub pole because essentially all it is is really just a support structure. It doesn't typically have live wire on it and it's typically shorter as well.
That's why, I thought that they were shorter and that's why it's actually how tall it is.
Yes, right.
Okay. Okay. And then you mentioned that one of the homeowners, is it 60 or 68?
68.
68, okay. And they've been contacted about an easement potentially?
Yes.
Okay. So, okay, so you need to take the DPW's recommendations?
Yes.
Back to National Grid and then figure it out and come back?
Definitely.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the, Counselor Angelini?
Mr. Chairman, see, could you just, out of basic curiosity, what's a quadruplex wire? I haven't, I haven't heard that term before.
Sure. So typical service wires to our residential homes, 200 to 400 amps are typically number two triplex wire. So tri just means three wires kind of bunched together and twisted and that just carries residential power to our homes. One, a quadruplex, that's typically for bigger services. So in this case, under a whole apartment complex, we need a quadruplex, which is usually used for like commercial buildings for a higher rated voltage.
So you could run a three-phase service off of that?
That's correct. That's exactly used for a three-phase service.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll say Counselor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Any other members of the council have any questions? All right, I'll go to the public. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak in favor of or against this petition? Second time, any member of the public that would like to speak in favor of or against petition 3-25? For a third and final time, any member of the public that would like to speak in favor of 3- favor of or against 3-25? Seeing none, Mr. President, we'll also keep this public hearing open and we can vote on a time.
Yeah, I have times for you when we get to that on the, on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, everyone.
Okay, I think we're 6:45, right on the button. Counselor Angelini, prepared to proceed with the Legal Affairs public hearing?
I am indeed. Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. My name is Peter Angelini, Chairman of Legal Affairs. I'm joined here this evening by the third member of Legal Affairs, Counselor Pauline Cormier. This is a public hearing, petition 48-24. Elizabeth Wood, Planning and Development Director on behalf of the Planning Board, Leominster, Massachusetts, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to uses not listed in the table of uses. This appeared first on our calendar on June 24th, was given further time on July 8th, and we find ourselves here this evening for the public hearing. Ms. Wood and Mr. Souza, would you like to come up and have a seat at the, our new table?
Yes. Looks nice.
We hope you like the accommodations.
We do.
Is the building commissioner, is he going to be joining?
He is not present tonight.
He's not present tonight?
I just spoke with him on the phone. He's in Springfield. He can't be here.
Okay. Well, in that case, I'll let you proceed perhaps and you can give us a little overview of.
I'll give you an overview if you would like.
Sure.
For the record, this is, I'm Elizabeth Wood, Planning and Development Director. I was approached recently by a colleague, one of another department head, Peter Niall, the building commissioner, with a request to consider a zoning amendment. He stated that the planning board had the authority to request zoning amendments and he wanted to take that course as opposed to in a petition. So I have a lot of respect for my colleagues and when they come forward with an idea, I take that with high regard. So his initial proposal was to allow for any use not listed in the table of uses to be permitted by special permit by the planning board. And when I heard that request, I had a talk with him and I said, and John can speak to this too, I think John spoke with him also, we said that's not a great idea because any use under the sun could come through with a special permit. You'll get a lot of, if it's not in the table, it probably shouldn't be allowed. We shouldn't be allowing it by special permit unless it's specifically stated that it's allowed by special permit. And when I had that talk with him, he consented. He said, yes, I agree, but we should still state in the amendment that if it's not allowed in the table of uses, it's not permitted, it's not a permitted use. I still discouraged it, but he wanted to move forward with it, so I took it to my planning board. My planning board requested that I get a legal opinion on this, saying, is this really necessary? And KP Law said, it wasn't a bad idea, you should go ahead and put it in your table of uses. And I believe you have that memo in front of you, I included that.
I'll read that into the record.
Okay.
When you're finished.
And then it came to my further attention that it was already stated within the zoning ordinance that if it's not allowed in the table of uses, it's not allowed. So why do we need to put it in a second time? That's redundant. When I brought this to Peter Niall's attention, he said, I apologize, I made a mistake. I no longer request the amendment. But by that time, the planning board had already moved forward with moving it to city council. So in front of you tonight, the planning board has not gotten that new information. They have not taken another vote on it, but I'm sure if they did, they would want to withdraw the petition. They're meeting August 19th. If you do need an opinion by the planning board, I can add it to the agenda. That's not a problem. But Peter Niall himself, who wanted the petition, no longer wants the petition because he made a mistake.
Okay.
I don't know if John wanted to.
No, I think you've covered it pretty well. Really, as I look at it, you can kill it here tonight and it'd be no, no adverse, it'd just go back to the planning board and with the results that we have, it's going to come back with a negative anyway. So given it further time, wouldn't accomplish anything and that, like I said, we, when we looked further into the ordinances, we found that it was already covered. So that's what I stand, we're just here for you to clarify things and.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, before we go to members of Legal Affairs, let me just read into the record. First of all, we have a letter dated June 10th, 2024, from Elizabeth Wood, our Planning and Development Director. It's addressed to the city clerk, 25 West Street, Leominster, Massachusetts. Regarding city council petition, request to amend the zoning orders pertaining to prohibited uses in the use chart. On 5/20/24, the planning board, 6-0, in support of petitioning the council to amend the zoning ordinance as follows. Insert the following language before the use chart in section 22-17 of the zoning ordinance. Any use not listed in the underlying district's table of uses and/or the overlay district's table of uses is hereby prohibited. Thank you for the consideration. Sincerely, Elizabeth Wood, AICP Planning and Development Director. Now I'd like to read into the record. We have an email chain. The first one is from Elizabeth Wood to Maribel, our Assistant City Clerk. It's dated July 25, 2024. "Maribel, I wanted to reach out to you to inform you that this petition was initiated by Peter Niall. Please refer to the meeting minutes below. The only reason this move forward by the board was because we got a legal opinion advising us to do so. I will be there in the evening of the 12th for the meeting. However, I strongly recommend you also reach out to Peter Niall to attend since this was his idea. Peter Niall informed me today that the proposed zoning amendment is a redundant verbiage in the ordinance and it so is not necessary. Will you please share this information with the council? The planning board will consider the scheduling of this for a public hearing on August 19th. However, it is my presumption that given this new information, the board will not give a positive recommendation for this zoning amendment. If you have any additional questions, please let me know. Regards, Elizabeth Wood, Director of Planning and Development, City of Leominster." We now have another email from, this one is to Elizabeth. Where's it from? Stephanie? Okay. And this is dated 5/20/24. "Hi, Elizabeth, as requested, please see the below excerpt from the 5/20/24 meeting minutes." And then we have item 6.2, "Letter from Peter Niall, Building Commissioner, Regarding a Proposed Zoning Amendment Regarding Article 1, Section 22-1, Table of Uses. Planning Board to Consider Request." And we have some bullets. First one, "Ms. Wood stated that this originally came before us with a different recommendation, which was if it was not allowed in the table of uses, the planning board could approve it with a special permit. Ms. Wood stated that she talked with Mr. Niall and told him that was not a very good idea. Ms. Wood said that if it is not allowed in the table of uses, it is strictly not allowed and that is assumed." But he wants to put that in writing. "Mr. Souza stated that on his first proposal, we cannot do that because that would assume that if something was not in an ordinance, it would come to us and it would take a condition away from the city council. Mr. Souza stated that all of our ordinances are done in affirmative. Mr. Souza stated that this is the Board of Forbiddened Uses, so it has to be permitted. Mr. Souza stated that unless it is spelled out, then it would have to go to the Board of Appeals and not us. Mr. Souza stated that we can handle this in one of two ways. Mr. Souza stated that we can refer it back to the building commissioner with comments stating it does not work, or we can schedule a hearing and have him come in and talk to us and rewrite it. Ms. Wood stated that there is a legal opinion from 5/17/24. The legal communication received was as follows. Elizabeth, it is my opinion, the language proposed by the building commissioner will clarify that the zoning ordinance is prohibitive, parentheses, meaning unless a use is listed, it is not allowed, close parentheses. This is a common phrase in zoning ordinances and bylaws. Instead of adding the language suggested by the building commissioner in section 22-1, I suggest that the following language be added to Article 3 at the end of the first paragraph or before the use chart in section 22-17. Any use not listed in the underlying district's table of uses and/or the overlay district's table of uses is hereby prohibited. Please let me know if you need anything further. Thanks, Amy. Amy E. Questwell, Esquire." More bullets. "Ms. Wood stated that as it stands, it is assumed that if it is not in the table of uses, it is prohibited." And this just adds in another line. "Mr. Souza stated that he understands, understands it that the planning board and city council can submit an ordinance change, but anyone else has to get 10 signatures. Mr. Weiser stated to Mr. Souza that we have language from the attorney, so why don't we have Elizabeth submit it on our behalf? Mr. Weiser made a motion that the board authorize Ms. Wood to petition the city council on behalf with the language presented by the city attorney in the proper format. Mr. Torioso's seconded vote was 6 to 0." And I believe that covers it. So I guess from where I'm sitting, after reading the letter from the attorney, I mean, she's, she's quite comfortable with the language and either, so if we take our zoning book and we look at page 31, we have Article 3, Table of Uses, she's suggesting that we insert it at the end of the first paragraph, right here.
Right.
So, I mean, to me, it certainly, if it's, whether it's redundant or not, according to the building commissioner, it really doesn't matter from what my perspective. I mean, it would be another case where it would be, it would clarify it and it's, I can reflect back on a couple instances where if this was in the zoning a while back, we would have alleviated a lot of problems. Plus you have to consider that we do have advertising costs on these legal hearings, so, you know, we hate to, hate to see something submitted, we pay for the legal notices and then have it withdrawn when in fact, the opinion that we have from the city solicitor's office would indicate that, that she was in favor of this, adding this language to the zoning book, so. Let me go to the other member of Legal Affairs, Counselor Pauline Cormier. Do you have any questions?
Well, just to clarify, so your position here tonight is actually to, to just withdraw it altogether, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just needed to clarify.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Cormier. Any members of the council? Counselor Vidal?
Can you, either of you tell me in the zoning ordinance where this language is?
I don't have it offhand. Peter Niall was going to come tonight and speak to that. I'm sorry, I apologize.
And Mr. Souza, you don't know where it is either?
No, I had to look at the book, but I, I did read it, but I just don't remember where it was. But it is, we did find it, it's, can I borrow the book a minute? I think it's easy enough to find.
While you're looking for it, I'm just going to suggest that the, that the Chairman of Legal Affairs may be aware, even though this is the planning board's petition, it still gets referred to them for an opinion and we can't act until they have sent, sent an opinion back to us or unless 60 days has expired, which is. 60 days has expired, which it has not. So, either way, this thing would, unless it was withdrawn, it would have to go further time tonight until they give us an opinion.
Yeah, I can't seem to find it now. It'll take me a little research. I know we did find it.
You're going to educate me because I've been practicing land use law long before I was a City Councilor in Leominster and I don't believe it's in there.
I couldn't find it.
I'm sorry, I did take Peter for his word.
Yeah.
I'm...
Well, he's not here.
Pretty slammed, so I just took him for his word.
I understand.
Are you all set? Mr. President?
I'm all set.
I'll have to look again. I didn't tell you right then.
Councilor Etch.
Questions for Mr. Souza. You stated that the zoning ordinances are all affirmative, in other words, they tell us what you can do, but there's nothing in there that says what you can't do?
That is correct.
And this is the opposite, it's prohibitive.
That is correct.
So you don't think it should belong in the ordinances? Is that your opinion?
Yeah. Because, you know, like I said, the Planning Board is the Board of Permitted Uses.
Okay.
So that just goes contrary to that. Okay? So, that's my opinion on that regard. What we do do is if the Planning Board, once it comes through and it's, something is in the book, okay, then we, with special permits, we condition things. So in that way, we can control how things are done and what they're done. And that's the method that we use, is the special permit.
Okay, hold that thought, Mr. Souza, we're going to open the meeting and then we'll ask for recess once we get to that point. So if you'd stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll take the roll call of the councilors that are present, starting with Councilor David Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Aringer.
Present.
Councilor Angelini.
Present.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Councilor Robbins.
Present.
Councilor Frida.
Present.
Non-present, eight members of the City Council are present. Does the Chairwoman of Ways and Means have her report?
I've had a request, actually, Mr. President, from Councilor Shalfo Zephyr, who's requested additional time to review the records, so I'm going to ask that they be continued until the next agenda.
Okay, so both the minutes from July 22 and the special meeting on July 29 will go over to our next meeting?
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion for recess?
Motion.
Councilor Robbins, you have a second? Councilor Cormier?
Present.
All in favor of recessing, please recognize usual manner. We are in recess by a vote of 8 to 0. Mr. Souza, if you weren't finished, you can continue now.
No, I think I was pretty much finished. Primarily, I think it's outside of the purview of the Planning Board when you put it that way. So, that was my, and it was, and as the Building Inspector has since come back and said he made a mistake, so, you know, I tend to agree with him.
Mr. Director, could you, you've been around planning boards a lot longer than I have, but it isn't just the Leominster Planning Board, it's the Board of Permitted Uses. I would suspect it's planning boards across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Well, you'll find this language in their zoning books, so...
Yes, but what I'm saying and what Peter told me is it's already in our book. We just have to find the reference for you.
Well, we, okay. Well, again, we, I couldn't find it, the Council President couldn't find it, you folks couldn't find it.
I took him for his word. I will find out tomorrow morning exactly where it is in the book, or where Peter says it is, and I will report back to you.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Councilor Angelini? Oh, Councilor Robbins, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to throw out there two things. First of all, I think that we have a recommendation that's relatively recent that tells us it's not in there, that we had gotten when we went through a zoning ordinance change just a couple of months ago, so regarding the short-term rentals. So I think that that whole issue could have been avoided if this language was there. So I think, I agree with the Chair's comments that he made earlier, that we spent money to have a legal opinion rendered again, plus now the notice went out. I really think this is something we should consider adding, especially when you consider, if you look at the minutes, the number of times that the word "assumed" is used, I think this will clear up any assumption that it's not permitted and make sure that it actually is not permitted. So, thank you.
My pleasure. Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yeah, thank you very much. When we did begin the discussions around short-term rentals, I mean, that was the Building Commissioner's basis for saying that the specific instance that we were talking about was not permitted, because if it's not in the book, it was not an allowed use. So that's what he based his enforcement of the zoning ordinance on, and he ultimately prevailed in that situation. So, wasn't in there, that was the basis for his enforcement action, which was successful.
Okay.
Just to be clear about how that went down.
Are you all set, Councilor?
I am, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilor Frida?
So, I might understand the plan is to go back to the Planning Board and have them review this and then come back with whether to ask to withdraw it or to go ahead with it?
Correct, August 19th.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll look through the book and see if we can find, we'll ask him specifically where we found it. It was his petition that he came to us, and at the time that he came to us, we told him that we didn't think it was necessary, but he said he wanted the petition, so we gave him the professional courtesy of following through with the Planning Board.
All right, well, thank you. Is there anyone else in the Council that has any questions or comments? All right, well, I think we're going to keep this public hearing open. I thank you both for your attendance this evening.
No problem.
Okay, all set, Councilor?
I am, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to conduct the public forum now. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the Council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The Council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the Council President, clarification may be given. I know that Councilor David Cormier is coming back, but we don't have a sign-up sheet. So, is there anybody in the audience?
Anybody?
No, we're all set. Thank you very much, though. Is there any member of the audience that wishes to speak in the public forum?
Elizabeth Wood, Planning and Development Director, 21 Sergeant Avenue, Leominster, I wish to speak to an item that, Petition 5-25, it's just the first time on the agenda, so I'm not going to, I'm going to be very brief, but I want to let you know that the Mayor appointed a Housing Committee, which you're aware of, which some of you serve on, to look at zoning, to look how we can enable zoning, to allow for more housing in Leominster. So the Housing Committee worked very hard on this. We worked with a consultant too, with the Mount Tucet Regional Planning Commission, over three meetings, and we've come up with some language, and one of them, as I said, made it to your petition tonight, and I think maybe due to the shortage in the Clerk's office, there was a second petition that should be on there tonight. And I'll wait for the Clerk's deference to put it on there or to speak to it. But I am available for any questions on these items and am very excited about this and hope that you'll give it your due consideration.
Ms. Wood, I did speak to Caitlin Huffman earlier today, so, and I know we spoke about the second petition that's coming, and I think it was your desire to align them so that they're on the same night. So we're going to recommend the public hearing on this matter be for the last September meeting, our last September meeting, so the other one will catch up.
Perfect.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the City Council in the public forum?
None.
Another time, any member of the public wishes to address the City Council in the public forum? And for a third and final time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the City Council in the public forum? Seeing none, I will declare the public forum closed and we'll go to our agenda, starting with communications from the Mayor. C7, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that Lindsay English be exempt from the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 268A, Section 20B, Conflict of Interest. Lindsay is currently employed by the City of Leominster Health Department and will be taking a position as a basketball coordinator for the winter basketball programs at the Leominster Recreation Department. This matter is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President, regular course, please.
Very well, C7 has been given regular course. C8, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $4,550.45 be made to the City Clerk Department advertising account and the same to be transferred from the stabilization account regarding prior year Bill's fiscal year '24 budget was insufficient to cover the expense. C8 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President, first time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, C8 has been given regular course. Councilor Frida has a question.
Yeah, just a couple of things. How is there insufficient money? How do you spend money that's not there? That's not legal?
I don't know. Why do I have to ask these questions? I don't know how to get some answers.
Okay, so...
You can't do that.
I know. I don't know why they did it, I'll find out.
We should have found out before it came to us.
I did have a chat with the comptroller and I don't think the bill's paid. I think it's an unpaid bill.
But you can't spend the money.
I understand, but I just, we'll tell you, that's how much I know so far. I understand what you're saying. Did you have any other questions or comments, Councilor?
Yeah, I'd actually like to know how much was incurred, how many bills are incurred since the first of the year, you know, to run out of this money.
The first of what year?
First of January.
First of January, so the second half of fiscal '24? Okay. You have that, Mr. Chairman?
I do, yeah. Thank you.
Anything else?
Oh, you do it.
Thank you, Councilor. We'll move on to petitions, first time on the agenda. 5-25, Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, request that the City Council amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to dimensional requirements for Residence B and Residence C District, see attached. This matter is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on our calendar, regular course, with a referral to the Building Commissioner. Need to establish a public hearing for this as well, and I would suggest after the testimony from our Planning Director, September 23, 2024, at 6:40 p.m.
Okay, very well. This matter has been given, 5-25 is given regular course with a referral to the Building Inspector, and the chairmen are requesting that we establish a hearing on September 23 at 6:40 p.m. Could I see, could everybody in favor of that hearing date recognize usual manner? And when opposed by a vote of 8 to 0, the hearing date has been established. Moving on to 6-25, Mark C. Bodanza, Ward 4 City Council, request to amend 13-77, stop signs on the Leominster Municipal Code by adding a stop sign for the southeastbound traffic on View Street at the intersection of Grand View Ave. and an additional stop sign for northwestbound traffic on View Street at the intersection of Grand View Ave. This matter is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, first time on the agenda, regular course, with referrals to the Leominster Police Department Traffic Division and the DPW, and we need to establish a public hearing for this as well, August 26, 2024, at 6:50 p.m.
All right, very well. Legal Affairs Chairman is suggesting regular course, referral to the Traffic Department, and a public hearing on August 26 at 6:50 p.m. All in favor of the public hearing? Please recognize usual manner. Anyone opposed by a vote of 8 to 0, the public hearing has been established. Moving on to the financial report, is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, the stabilization fund began on July 1, 2024, and we have currently in it $22,891,453.79, which includes $50,180.97 in interest earnings so far. The opioid stabilization has $518,703.20, and the capital stabilization has $2,193,191.62, and that is the financial report.
Very well, anybody have any questions? Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
No question, but through the Chair, the Finance Chair, I just would like him to make sure that we get financial reports. We didn't have one in this.
Oh, yeah, she, I think it was left in the Clerk's office Friday, but because nobody's been around, we haven't gotten it. So the comptroller left this on my desk tonight because I asked her about it, so I'd have some, but there's a copy of it in the Clerk's office, I'll make sure everybody gets one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All set, Councilor? Okay. Moving on to matters before the Legal Affairs Committee, starting with 48-24, is the Chairman ready to report?
Oh, yeah, Mr. President, thank you. 48-24 is Elizabeth Wood, Planning and Development Director, on behalf of the Planning Board, Leominster, Massachusetts, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to uses not listed in the table of uses. As you are aware, we held a public hearing earlier this evening that remained open. The Planning Board will be meeting on the 19th of this month. Unfortunately, the Building Commissioner was unable to attend and give us some clarity on this from his position, so it would be my recommendation, Mr. President, that we give this matter further time, and I would ask you to poll this third member of my committee.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Okay, so you heard the recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to give 48-24 further time, and the continued public hearing is suggested for August 28 at 6:30 p.m.
You mean 26?
26.
I'm sorry, August 26, you are correct. Anybody, is there any further discussion? At 6:30 p.m. I'll renew, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 48-24 further time and establishing that public hearing date, please recognize usual manner. By a vote of 8 to 0, 48-24 has been given regular time and a new public hearing date is established. Moving on to C3.
Thank you, Mr. President. C3, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the Council vote to revise Chapter 21, Article 3, Section 21-22.3 of the Leominster City Ordinance due to typos in the rate schedule, voted and approved by Leominster City Council on May 13, 2024. See attached Sewer Rate Schedule for further information on this request. Mr. President, at our July 22 meeting, we conducted a public hearing on this matter and we closed that public hearing. Unfortunately, there was an error in the agenda and this wasn't on for our vote later in our meeting. So I will give a brief recap again on this. This came from, after this was passed by this entire Council on the 13th unanimously of May, it was brought to my attention by the Water Department that there were a couple of typos contained within the rate schedule, and this is for out-of-town rates, out-of-city rates. I had provided those before, but I'd be happy to do it again. In fact, I'll read this portion of the letter. "The Department of Public Works is requesting to revise Chapter 21, Article 3, Section 21-22.3 of the Leominster City Ordinance due to typos found in the rate schedule voted and approved by Leominster City Council on May 13, 2024 as follows. Corrections are highlighted." Chapter 21, Article 3, Section 21-22.3 of the revised ordinance is entitled Sewer Use a Rate Schedule by deleting the provision for meted rates within and outside the city and inserting the following rates in its place. And, once again, this is the rate schedule that we're provided with, the highlighted numbers here, and this is again, this is out-of-city sewage, and again, it's based on a flat rate with a water meter because obviously there's no sewer meters. The rate that should appear, out-of-city as of July 1, 2024, meted 100 cubic feet, the correct number should be $10.47, and as of July 1, 2025, the rate should reflect And on the second page of the rate... And on the second page of the rate schedule, and this is for septic haulers out of the city, so folks that are emptying septic tanks out of the city and bringing them to our treatment plant, the septic out-of-city volume minimum over 1,000 gallons should read $11.50. So any additional volume over 1,000 gallons is $11.50. So with that, it would be my recommendation, again, that we adopt this amended version of the sewer schedule, and I would ask you to check with this third member of my committee.
Very well. Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs Committee to grant C-three. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of granting C-three, please recognize usual manner. Anyone opposed by a vote of eight to zero, C-three has been granted. Moving on to Public Service. Mr. Chairman, if you want to just summarize these, because they've been read already tonight, that's fine. Okay?
Okay. Petition two dash twenty-five, this is National Grid looking to install a new pole on Lancaster Street that is approximately 190 feet southeast of the center line of Central Street and Lancaster Street. National Grid is going to install pole two dash eighty-four and guide to replace tree guy since the tree is being removed. We had a subcommittee meeting as well as a public hearing earlier this evening where it was brought to our attention by the constituent who lives where the tree is supposedly being removed, that the tree might be in good health. Seeing such, I'm going to ask that we give this further time and ask the DPW to give us some more information on the situation with the tree and whether the tree might be able to be kept, and I'll ask that you check with the two other members of my committee.
Very well. Counselor Frieda?
I agree.
And Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
I agree, too.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Public Service Committee to give two dash twenty-five further time and establish a continued public hearing on August 26th at 6:45 PM. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please recognize usual manner. By a vote of eight to zero, two dash twenty-five has got further time, and a new public hearing has been established. Moving on to three twenty-five.
Three dash twenty-five, this is also a petition by National Grid. Pleasant Street, National Grid, to install one solely-owned pole on Pleasant Street beginning at a point approximately 66 feet south of the center line of the intersection of Pleasant Street and Pleasant Place. National Grid will be installing quadruplex to service 800A at 71 Pleasant Street, installing stub pole eight dash eighty-four to support the new quadruplex wire Lemmister mass. Again, this was the topic of both our subcommittee meeting and public hearing earlier tonight that we left open. We received a letter from the DPW, which I'll just briefly read again, indicating that the DPW approves the petition with the following conditions. The back of the sidewalk is on the edge of the right-of-way of Pleasant Street. The guy wire should be placed on city property. The guy wire should be placed with enough clearance to allow a sidewalk tractor to pass. When asked, the representative from National Grid indicated that though, because of the space situation, it might have to go on private property, so National Grid is going to come back with some more information. Seeing such, I'm going to ask for further time on this as well, and ask that you check with the other members of the committee.
Very well. Counselor Frieda?
I agree.
And Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
So you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Public Service Committee to give three dash twenty-five further time and establish a new public hearing of August 26th at 6:40 PM. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving further time and establish that public hearing, please recognize usual manner. By a vote of eight to zero, petition has been given further time, and a new public hearing has been established. Moving on to Ways and Means. Is the Chairwoman ready to report?
I am. Mr. President, C-four, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that the attached list of election workers for the state primary election, September 3rd, 2024, be appointed. We had this on for regular course at our last meeting. There was an issue with some of the addresses missing on that. They have all been filed in. Everybody should have gotten a copy of that, and that copy of that list is available in the Clerk's office. It would be my position, Mr. President, to grant C-four, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Okay. Counselor Arndinger?
I agree.
And Counselor David Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant C-four. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-four, please recognize usual manner. Anyone opposed by a vote of eight to zero, C-four has been granted. Moving on to C-five.
Uh, Dean, C-five, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that the City Council vote to remove Paula Deacon from the School Building Committee for the Fallbrook Elementary School due to her retirement. This just makes some common sense. Superintendent Deacon is now retired, and I think it makes more sense with C-five, and we'll follow up with C-six, that she be removed from that committee and that our new superintendent be appointed to it. So it'd be my position to grant C-five, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Arndinger?
I agree.
Counselor David Cormier?
I also agree.
Heard the unanimous recommendation of Ways and Means to grant C-five. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please recognize usual manner. Anyone opposed by a vote of eight to zero, C-five has been granted. Moving on to C-six.
C-sixteen, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the City Council vote to add the new superintendent of schools, Robin Desmond, to the School Building Committee for the Fallbrook Elementary School. Again, as with C-five, it just makes sense that we have the new superintendent on this committee. It's my, it would be my position to grant that, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Arndinger?
I agree.
And Counselor Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant C-six. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-six, please recognize usual manner. Anyone opposed by a vote of eight to zero, C-six has been granted. Moving on to four dash twenty-five.
Four dash twenty-five, Maribel Perez, Assistant City Clerk, requests that the City Council grant the attached election order for the September 3rd, 2024 state primary election. Mr. President, I don't believe this has been read in.
I think you have to, though.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
That's, that's fine. This is from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, William Francis Galvin, Secretary of the Commonwealth, City of Lemmister, Election Order for the State Primary, September 3rd, 2024. Voted, "The meetings of the citizens of this city qualified to vote in the election for state primaries shall be held on Tuesday, the third day of September 2024, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, for the purpose of casting their votes in the presidential preference primary election for the candidates of political parties for the following offices. State preference for this Commonwealth, Senator in Congress statewide, Representative in Congress, Second District, Counselor, Seventh District, Senator in General Court, Worcester and Middlesex District, Representative in General Court, Fourth Worcester District, Clerk of Courts, Worcester County, I'm sorry, Register of Deeds, Western Northern District. It is further ordered that the following polling places are designated by the City Council. Ward One, Precinct A, Skyview Middle School, 50 Kennedy Way. Ward One, Precinct B, Skyview Middle School, 50 Kennedy Way. Ward One, Precinct C, Skyview Middle School, 500 Kennedy Way. Ward Two, Precinct A, Francis Drake Elementary School, 95 Viskaloid Ave. Ward Two, Precinct B, Francis Drake Elementary School, 95 Viskaloid Ave. Ward Two, Precinct C, Francis Drake Elementary School, 95 Viskaloid Ave. Ward Three, Precinct A, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, 456 Litchfield Street. Ward Three, Precinct B, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, 456 Litchfield Street. Ward Three, Precinct C, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, 456 Litchfield Street. Ward Four, Precinct A, Senior Citizens Drop-In Center, 5 Pond Street. Ward Four, Precinct B, Lemmister Veterans Center, 100 West Street. Ward Four, Precinct C, Lemmister Veterans Center, 100 West Street. Ward Five, Precinct A, Auditorium, City Hall, 25 West Street. Ward Five, Precinct B, Auditorium, City Hall, 25 West Street. Ward Five, Precinct C, First Baptist Church of Lemmister, 23 West Street. Hereof fail not and make return of this warrant with your doings thereupon at the time and place of said voting, given under their hands, and it's to be signed at the date of 2024 by the Lemmister City Council. There also comes with an order posted in public places as follows. City Hall, Veterans Center, Police Department, Fire Stations, Library, Recreation Department, Department of Public Works, School Department, Cemetery Department, Wastewater Treatment Plant, Emergency Management, Monticuce Opportunity Council, the Spanish-American Center, and the Post Office. And that will be, this warrant must be posted by August 12th, 2024, at least seven days prior to September 3rd, 2024 state preference primary. And it is also, this is also available in Spanish. Both copies will be available at both places. Mr. President, I am not reading it in Spanish, because that would be an insult to all our Spanish-speaking constituents. So it would be my position to grant four dash twenty-five, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Arndinger?
I agree.
Counselor Cormier?
I also agree.
All right. You heard the unanimous recommendation of Ways and Means Committee to grant four dash twenty-five. Is there any discussion? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
I have a question. I'm not sure through the Chair to the Ways and Means Chair if she can answer this, but the, the petition was timestamped on July 9th, which is over five weeks ago, and the list that we're supposed to vote on and all sign this evening, today is the last day that it can be posted in order to make the September 3rd primary deadline. So I'm just curious as to why it took, I don't know why it, we didn't, we haven't seen this sooner, so that we could have just gotten this done and posted sooner. Do you have any idea?
Well, my only, my only idea would be that we've had, we were a little bit behind in the Clerk's office with the not having a, a full-time city clerk and our assistant playing a little bit of catch-up. I've also been informed that one of the persons that helps mainly with the elections is, she has been out for a period of time, so that's my understanding. Not a great excuse, but it was on, I believe it was on the first time on our agenda at the last meeting.
Yeah, would have had to, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so you've heard, you've heard the recommendation once again. All in favor, please recognize usual manner. Anyone opposed by a vote of eight to zero, four dash twenty-five has been granted, and we do need to sign those in both English and Spanish tonight before we leave, counselors. So make sure you don't go anywhere before you sign those. All right, moving on to, also onto Ways and Means, the election of the new city clerk. Is the Chairwoman of Ways and Means ready to proceed with that?
The, so, just to recap, obviously, at the, our last meeting, we voted to appoint a new city clerk, Elizabeth Dorian, and I know that members of the City Council, including our President, have worked with Human Resources and the city to put together an employment contract for Ms. Dorian. Copies of that contract were made available to the counselors, and I believe Ms. Dorian has agreed to the terms of that contract.
She has signed it, and I believe the HR, Human Resources person did email the signed letter of employment to the whole council.
And it is my expectation that she is going to start on August 20th.
That's, that's the plan.
And that would be my report.
And so your, your recommendation is to adopt the contract?
It's to adopt the contract, yes, and I'd ask you to check with the other members.
Counselor Arndinger?
I agree.
And Counselor Cormier?
I also agree.
So the unanimous recommendation is to adopt, and I think Counselor Frieda has a question.
First of all, we don't elect clerks, we appoint them, and that's a big distinction, because there are a lot of communities that elect them, so I think that needs to be corrected. Secondly, I don't know if mine is different than anybody else's, but she might have signed the contract, but she didn't accept it. She either had to accept or decline, and she didn't do either.
I'm looking at a document that basically indicates the offer is, it says, I, oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, okay. She didn't circle one or the other. I can tell you from talking to her that it's clear to me that she accepted it, but...
Well, it might be clear, but this is supposedly a, a document that supposedly she, she accepted, and it's not signed, not accepted by her.
All right. Any other questions? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yep, through the Chair to the Ways and Means Chair. I would appreciate if you would read the conditional offer of employment into the record. I think it's important for the public to know what this is all about.
Do you want me to do that?
I can do it.
Okay.
I can do it. Thank you. This is dated, it's the City of Lemmister, from the Personnel Department. Dated August 1st, 2024, Ms. Elizabeth Dorian, 58, Westford Street in Gardner, conditional offer of employment. Dear Ms. Dorian, it gives me great pleasure to conditionally offer you the position of full-time Lemmister City Clerk. The term of your appointment shall be for a period of up to five years, as provided by the City Charter, Section 3.7A. A copy of the job description for the city clerk setting forth the general duties and responsibilities of the position is attached heretofore for your reference. The rate of pay for the position in the city clerk is an S-10 classification, starting in F, at, and fiscal year 25 annual salary of $94,757,000 plus $4,000 for clerk of the council and $1,500 for clerk of the registrar of voters. The clerk is an exempt position under the provisions of the Federal Fair Labor Standards Act and the general laws. The city may provide for annual cost of living adjustments as voted by the City Council during the term of your appointment. In the event of a cost of living adjustment is voted by the council, your salary will be adjusted accordingly. The benefits to which you're entitled are as follows. Sick time accumulates 1.25 days a month for a total of 15 days per year, eligible to use after six months of employment. Vacation time, three days prorated vacation days for the remainder of the calendar year 2024, two weeks, 10 days paid vacation beginning January 2025. Personal days, two, personal days per fiscal year, which may not be carried over and which are subject to forfeiture if they are not used. Probationary period, six months during which time you may be removed for any reason or no reason. Holidays, you are entitled to the following 12 paid holidays. New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, Patriots' Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans' Day, Thanksgiving Day, Christmas, and Juneteenth. With regards to obtaining your Justice of the Peace certificate, once you obtain your Justice of the Peace certificate to conduct weddings in the city, please contact the City Council for policies and procedures for officiating marriage ceremonies for the City of Lemmister. I hope that this information has been helpful. If you have any further questions, please contact me. As set out below, please advise as to your acceptance of this conditional offer in writing either on or before Friday, August 2nd, 2024, at 4:00 PM. By returning this page to me either in hand or electronically, this offer is contingent on satisfactory results of your background check, query, drug test, and pre-employment physical. And it is signed, Elizabeth Dorian, except decline. The above employment offers, offer eight to 2024. Respectfully, Wendy, Wendy Hurley, Human Resources Director.
Okay, Counselor? All right. Any other discussion? All right, so this vote, I'm sorry, go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, I do have some comments.
Okay.
I'll make the comments.
Sure.
You know, obviously was here for the interviews of the four finalists that were brought down to the City Council, and Ms. Dorian is a very nice person, very personable. However, I think for this job, she just does not have the appropriate experience, doesn't even meet the minimum required or preferred requirements for the job as listed in the job description. Three to five years of municipal administrative experience and a bachelor's degree. And although nice and has some limited experience as an assistant clerk in a city about half of our size, I just don't think that, I think that we had other qual, other folks who were more qualified and would have been a better fit. And I think part of my concern is that hiring somebody with less experience than the job actually requires is going to cost taxpayers more money, because we're going to have actually requires is going to cost taxpayers more money, because we're going to be spending more money on a contractual arrangement that will require the acting city clerk to provide training and assistance, especially through a very hectic campaign, not campaign season, election season. So, you know, although she's a very nice woman, was very personable in, in person during her interview, I just cannot support this. I just feel very strongly that she does not have the qualifications to do that very important department head job.
Okay, outside, Councilor?
I am.
Any other comments, questions? Council Freedom?
Yeah. Um, in the second page, when it has regards to obtaining the Justice of the Peace certificate, is there any discussion that's been had? Because that was a main bone of contention, as we all know, with the, with that office and weddings. It has been, as long as I've been here, whether it can be done during city time or whether it should not be, whether the money should be shared, whether, whether it's totally to go to the clerk. Any discussion on that been had? I mean, it does say, down the road to have a, a discussion for the City Council for policies and procedures, but we know we don't have the discussion. It's one or two of you that have a discussion, not, not the council, even though it clarifies the council. I mean, I think there are a lot of loose ends here that really we need to look at. That's an important piece. We know what happened with the clerk's office, with, with people being written up because of misunderstandings on, on the clerk position and on weddings. So I, I think that's an important piece that needs to be clarified before we even go further on it.
Okay, well, for my, I won't speak for the Ways and Means Chair, but I can assure you that if I have anything to do with it, once she is a Justice of the Peace, this will be brought to the full council for discussion.
Yeah, I haven't had, and that's why that, that is in there, is when it, when it comes up, when, once that's taken care of, once it comes up, it'll be brought to the full council.
We, we should have had more discussion on the whole thing, because a lot of us with some experience on this council, and all of us having a discussion would not have been a bad thing, instead of eliminating some of us from even having any kind of input. And it's very clear that we haven't had an input, and makes it difficult to sit here and be expected to vote on somebody who does have so little experience. And I've been pretty consistent with people that have come across this, this council. The last one that I, I pretty much argued about was someone who had a job every other year, six months to a year here, six months to a year there. He didn't last a year here and caused some serious problems before he finally left. I was the only one to vote against him, and I tried desperately to put that point across. I feel the same way here, that there's just not enough, not just the experience, I'm more concerned with, too many places, being in, in too many places over a certain period of time, a year in one job, a year in another job, a year in another job, six months in the building department, just about a year in the, in the clerk's office, and then, you know, we're going to hire her for a major, a major position in our clerk's office. I, I understand the votes have already been taken, but this is a contract that I'm not comfortable with.
Council Robbins.
Can I just, oh, sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. Can I just ask a clarifying question, either to you or through you to the Ways and Means Chair? Council Shalfo Zephyr mentioned the possibility of the contract continuing for election support. Is that going to continue?
With Ms. Huffman?
Correct.
Yes. My understanding from talking to the comptroller is that the, her sort of outside work will continue through the September primary, then it's, the plan is to suspend that contract until the November general election, and then to reinstitute it out of a, you know, abundance of conservatism for the taxpayer through, to get us through the general election in November. Yeah, that's the plan.
I appreciate the clarification. I guess I'll just share, that was one of the major concerns of this whole council, was election experience.
Yep.
I understand we sit where we sit, and we have to deal with the situation that we have to deal with. I just think it's unfortunate that we need to continue paying such a high rate for a city clerk on top of an additional contracted position. That is by no means to say that I don't think the integrity of the election and the, the efficiency of the election is important, because it is.
I think, I think we're going to be within the, the, what the former city clerk's budget was for her salary, because of course, we're paying her a lesser rate, and we had nobody for a period of time but her, and of course, the, the new city clerk is earning substantially less than she did. So I think between those two items, we should be okay, from talking to the comptroller, to be able to make it within what the original budget line was.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. I just think that as we hire someone, this is normally a qualification that we would be looking for, and I think that's important to point out.
Okay, thank you. Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Yep, thank you very much. Through the chair to the Ways and Means Chair, I don't know if you know this, but before the new city clerk gets her Justice of the Peace, is the assistant city clerk doing weddings? Do people that come to Lemister to get married, is there a service in the office that can prov, perform that and provide that service?
I don't think, I don't, I don't know that they can, and I don't know that Maribel has the Justice of the Peace.
She's a JP, she's a Justice of the Peace. She's, she does weddings.
She's doing weddings?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that's really important. I also think, just to, you know, while I understand that we have had nobody in that position for a while, so we've made some savings, we're paying the new person, you know, at the entry level step for the job, which is, I think, $94,000. The rate that we've been paying for an outside consultant of over $58 an hour at $20, at 20 hours a week, which is over $1,100 on the weeks when we have meetings, that's a lot of money. And even though, you know, at the end of the election season in November, you know, if we do, you know, if we do not overspend in that line item, well, that's a good thing. But by the same token, you know, my position is we could have hired somebody that didn't need all of that additional oversight and training and supervision through the election season, and we'd be saving taxpayers money. So that's my point.
Okay, thank you, Councilor. Anybody else? Council Freedom?
Yeah, I think that just, that just strikes another, another chord. We have an assistant clerk. We're paying the former clerk $58 an hour to watch our meetings virtually and write the minutes up from that meeting. We've had the assistant clerk sitting here at the meeting, taking the minutes. How is there 20 hours? If you look at some of the invoices that were forwarded to us, I mean, the breakdown's not there. We paid her just close to $12,000 since she left. She left the job, and we paid her close to $12,000. There were four people working in that office before that, we don't even know who they were or how they got there. We spent $20,000 plus from the beginning of January to, to the time the comptroller and the HR director went and removed those four people. That's $32,000 in a very short period of time. And again, I'm going to go back to the, to the point that there wasn't total council input into this. Maybe if we had discussions amongst all of us and said, well, this is a good idea, that's a good idea, maybe we should look at this. We didn't do that. Contracts were signed without us even knowing, I won't speak, I won't say us, I'll say me. No idea what was in that contract. And, and I just, say what you want. I put a petition in to try to address this, because that was the only way I knew how. That was rejected. I had another petition that I put in last week, and the date was changed for petitions to get in for the agenda. This, this serious problem here, and I don't see it getting any better with, with having someone inexperienced in that office.
Outside, anybody else? Okay, this vote's going to be by roll call, starting with Council David Cormier.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council Oringer.
Yay.
Council Angelina.
Yay.
Council Shalfo Zephyr.
Nay.
Council Robbins.
Nay.
Council Freedom.
Nay.
That shall be recorded as yay by a vote of five to three. The conduct, I mean, the contract is approved. All right, any new business? Any old business? Anything under the community calendar? Council Freedom?
I guess the community calendar.
Old business, okay.
I've been asked by a few people, and I guess I heard through the grapevine that you're the chair, so I guess I'll address you.
Yeah.
Um, do we have any information about a potential parade that's going to take place?
Yes, it's going to be on the 15th of September, which is the day following the Johnny Appleseed Fair.
Is the City Council included in that parade?
Sure, anybody, I would suggest you contact Michelle in the mayor's office, she's the one who is spearheading that, and I'm sure anybody that wants to be involved can absolutely be involved. There are upstairs in the hallway, before you leave tonight, there are calendars of events. They run from September 12th to, I think, October 5th, a variety of events in the city in recognition of the 250th anniversary of Johnny Appleseed's birth, which is September 26th, to be exact. The first event kicks off in the mayor's office on September 12th, with the, and coincidentally at the JA Visitor Center, same date, there's a release of a special commemorative coin that was produced for the event, that's avail, that'll be available for a purchase price of $10. And there are a whole bunch of events throughout those weeks, including a ball at the library on October 5, and there's other events. Anybody, the calendars are free. They're in the library, they're at the JA Visitor Center, they're in the hallway upstairs outside the mayor's office. Pick up a calendar, and there's a whole bunch of things to do over those weeks. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Council Cormier, Council Oringer, all in favor? We are adjourned.
The Lemister City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCareless Insurance Agency at www.decarelessinsuranceagency.com, and by Avidia Bank at www.avidiabank.com.